If I could have your attention, please. Ms. Whitby tells me it's 6:00. So at that point in time, Ms. Whitby, if you'll please call and roll.
Yes, sir Ross.
Here.
White is absent. Taylor is absent. Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Vouch?
Here.
Height?
Present.
And Witcher is absent. Aquarum is present, sir.
Thank you. If you'd please stand. Alderman, Baxter's going to lead us in prayer and pledge.
I pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to come together and conduct the business of this city. We ask, Lord, that you would just continue your blessings upon our residents and on our employees throughout the city as they provide professional service to our residents. We ask, Lord, that you'd just be with us and let us make wise decisions that would be pleasing in not only your eyes but in the eyes of our constituents. Forgive us where we failed you, for we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So move. On the motion.
Question to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Communications. Anybody want to pull the communications?
Number three.
Pull number three. Okay. Any others? How about a motion to adopt-
Accepting file one and two.
And four and five.
Four and five.
Okay. On the motion.
On the motion one, two, four, and five, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Communication. Does anybody want to pull the communications?
Number three.
Pull number three. Okay. Any others? How about a motion to adopt-
Accepting file one and two.
And four and five.
Four and five.
Okay. On the motion.
On the motion one, two, four, and five, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Communication. Does anybody want to pull the communications?
Number three. Do you want it by title or in its entirety?
Can you just hit the highlights?
Yes, ma'am. This is a letter from Scott Bennett, Director of Highways and Transportation of the Arkansas State Highway and Transportation Department. It's a notice of hearings on I-30, I-40 public meeting in North Little Rock regarding 30 Crossing Project, I-530, Highway 67, and the widening and reconstruction. The date will be Thursday, October 22, 2015, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Friendly Chapel, Church of the Nazarene Gym at 116 South Pine Street.
Say to have a motion.
Amen.
Second. Comment? Go ahead.
This was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago by two business owners that are affected by the closing of, potential closing of this exit. And I think it's important that we make a statement at this meeting. I hadn't planned on going to this meeting until I found out about it in the last couple of days. But I'm going to go to this meeting and I would invite some of my fellow Alder persons to attend that meeting with me.
They, you know, we've been aware of this for several months. And I meet monthly with the highway department and our engineers. And they have come up with an alternative that I think we can all live with. They're going to drop, and I'll let them tell you exactly, but the exit's not going away. It's just going to be moved from 15th Street. It'll drop you down at 19th Street. And that side road will go all the way to Broadway. So you could get off at 19th and go all the way downtown if you wanted to and go over the railroad tracks. The exit heading north, I believe, is going to stay the same. Now, the own ramp is going to be different right there at 15th Street. You'll have to go on up and get on like you're going to Memphis. If you want to go towards Burns Park, you'll have to do the loop there by the, and come back in front of the church. So they are working on it.
They're going to present a workable solution that night at that meeting.
Yeah. I'm very pleased. I told them at the last briefing they gave me that I thought we could live with that and the businesses down there could live with it, too. You know, we know it's not going to stay the same, but as small changes as possible makes us more happy. So I think this will make everybody happy.
Ms. Ross?
And it's still evolving, too, from what I understand. And still, there's still a possibility that that 19th could be moved back to 13th Street. So everyone needs to come and voice their opinion. I've had people tell me, it doesn't make any difference. Highway Department's going to do what they want to do. But that's not true if you don't voice your opinion. So I just wanted to add along with you that everyone needs to come out.
We're in the second phase of this. You know, the first phase was one group of engineers. The second phase is, there's a completely different set of engineers with different eyes, different thoughts. This group's out of Florida. And they're pretty sharp. And they've also come up, I think, with some unique ideas on the north interchange that might be cheap enough that we can fix that north interchange in this phase.
Want to get our lights turned back on, too?
No. Lights, we can't take care of the lights. Okay. We have a motion and a second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Okay. We have a couple of presentations. The fun ones I'm going to do first. Not that wastewater's presentation won't be fun. I'm sure it will be. So I'm going to move. Let me turn my mic on and I'm going to move down below here and make a presentation.
You know, and I've already met with this group, so I'm going to be repeating a lot that I said to them. But we've all heard the saying that, "I was country before country was cool." Well, this group that we're going to honor today moved downtown into our Jenna before it was the cool place to be. And they are celebrating now their 15th year here on Main Street in the 600 block.
500 block.
Yeah. 530. So we think, and I think, the mayor's office thinks that it's pretty special and that we wanted to recognize their entire group today. So let me read this proclamation, if I may. "To whom all these presents shall come greetings, whereas the visions of the Carousel Fit-for-Life Wellness Center is to shape up the world spiritually, mentally, physically, and financially, which is vital to the overall well-being of the citizens of our community. And whereas the Carousel Fit-for-Life Wellness Center is committed to creating an opportunity for spiritual, physical, and mental enhancement to improve the lives of the citizens of North Little Rock. And whereas the Carousel Fit-for-Life Wellness Center is celebrating its 15th anniversary and celebrating the differences made in the life of the people who have utilized the center. And now therefore I, Joe A. Smith, Mayor of the City of North Little Rock, do hereby proclaim, October 15, 2015, as the Carousel Fit-for-Life Wellness Center Day, in recognition of its 15th anniversary, a witness hereto, I set my hand and cause the seal of the City of North Little Rock to be affixed this 21st day of September's when we did it. And it's signed by me and City Clerk Diane Whitby." So come on up and let's get a picture made. As I've said earlier, you know, this group is a family. And they have done well. And their success makes it an opportunity for people to have jobs in our city. And that's what we like. And so we want to thank you all very much for what you do. Okay?
All right. Y'all smile for the TV cameras. Okay. Congratulations. You want to say anything? Walk over here to the microphone if you want to say something. Okay. You guys move so we can get her on the TV camera.
We're excited. We are grateful that God gave us a vision in 2000 to come to North Little Rock. And we have been working hard, successfully, and being able to come down here before the board and before yourself. We are grateful. We're going to do our very best to continue to keep people spiritually, mentally, physically, and financially fit. Thank you once again. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for what you do. Appreciate it very much. Good to see you. Thank you.
I'd like to say one thing. There's always a man behind the scene somewhere.
That's right.
Mayor, you know, a few minutes ago, we talked about 15 years. My wonderful husband, we have been married for 41 years.
Goodness gracious. Congratulations. You know, while I'm down here, I want to take special privilege. You know, one of our citizens that comes to a lot of our council meetings and is quite the man about town, needless to say, and is a good supporter of his community and his neighborhood association. And I ran into him at National Night Out last week. And he was there, first one there, last one to go home, I'm sure. And so I asked him if I could get a picture made with him, and he let me. So, Mr. Ard, if you'd come up, I want to give this picture to you, that you and I in it. And I wrote on it. I wrote on it to Jimmy, best wishes for a healthy 2016. So hopefully, 2016 is going to be healthier for you than last year was.
Now, I have one thing to say.
Now, did you sign up to say this?
Yes. Now I know why he wanted to know if I'd go home and put a shirt on.
Okay. We're getting ready to go into the wastewater. Y'all want to ease out? Thank you. Appreciate what you do. Mark, if you want to come up, introduce our presentation and-
Mayor, do you know what I say? We're all sporting pink. All the Carousel Group. I don't have pink on.
It's all yours, Mark.
Yes, sir. Thank you. In 2011, the Treatment Committee entered into a consent administrative order with the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality. And at that time, the utility completed a master plan which recommended several phases of capital improvements to address the issues of sanitary sewer overflows. And we have, earlier this year, we realized that we were working our way through and wrapping up the first phase of those capital improvements. And it was time for us to get a loan and go into the next phase of capital improvements. And so we contracted with Mr. Dan Jackson with WillDanEconomist.com to do a study of our rates to see if it could support a loan. And I have brought him here today to explain the findings of that rate study and our need for an additional rate increase to support loans for capital improvements to take our projects to the next phase.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dan Jackson. I am Vice President of WillDan Financial Services, formerly known as Economist.com. We have had the privilege of being the city's wastewater rate consultant since 1999 for almost the last 16 years now, it seems like. We have worked with you periodically to take a look at your long-term wastewater rate structure to determine whether or not the utility is recovering sufficient revenues to pay all of your operating costs and to service the capital improvement needs that your utility has now and in the future. This latest rate study was commissioned earlier this year. We spent a significant amount of time with your staff, who did a remarkable job in getting us the information we needed in order to put together this analysis. The purpose of my hopefully brief presentation tonight is to talk with you a little bit about your needs for the future and the rate structures that you need to put in place in order to ensure that you continue to provide a very high level of service to your rate payers. This is never an easy thing to talk about. Water and wastewater rates have been going up at a remarkably high rate across the United States over the last 10 years. And this trend is expected to continue in the future. But the important thing to keep in mind is that rates represent an investment in the future of your community. You have certain obligations that you need to meet. Your rate payers expect a certain level of service, and that level of service costs money. However, knowing this in advance gives you the ability to set a rate plan in place that gets you the revenues you need while, to the best extent possible, minimizes the impact of any increases on your rate payers. Now, in this, like I said, hopefully, brief presentation, I'm going to go through a couple of different topics. I'm going to first talk a little bit about wastewater rates across the state of Arkansas because I think it's important for decision-makers like you to understand what's going on around the state and in the industry. I'm then going to briefly talk about your volumes and your revenue requirements. In other words, how much wastewater are you processing and how much does it cost you to do that? I'm then going to talk about your capital improvement plan because that is the biggest single driver behind the need for a long-term rate plan. Then I'll go through the proposed rate plan itself, both the rates and the impact on an average family. And then I'll wrap up the presentation. I want to start this off by talking about what's going on in the industry here as we enter the 21st century. And one very important thing to keep in mind in the water and wastewater industry is that costs are going up. The American Water Works Association projects that water and sewer infrastructure needs could top $2 trillion across the United States in the next 20 years. What is happening is we have a lot of old infrastructure in the ground. You have lines in the ground. You have wastewater treatment plants. Like any asset, these things wear out over a period of time, and they have to be replaced. And it costs a lot more money to replace a sewer line today than it did 20 or 30 years ago. All of this has to be factored into a long-term rate plan. Other utilities across the country are struggling with this issue as well. As a matter of fact, the average utility has been raising its rates by 5% to 6% every year. In other words, wastewater rates are going up at more than double the rate of inflation. Now, it's never an easy thing to do to ask people to pay more, and many utilities are not doing that. As a matter of fact, 30% to 40% of utilities in the United States right now are charging rates that don't cover their costs. So another utility might have a rate that's lower than yours, but that doesn't necessarily mean their costs are lower than yours. It might mean that they have made the managerial decision that they're going to subsidize their wastewater rates from their general fund. Now, it's not illegal to do that. I don't think that's necessarily good financial policy, but there are many utilities out there that do that. The rate plan that we present to you tonight will require no subsidization from the general fund to the wastewater fund. It will ensure that wastewater customers actually pay what it costs you to provide that service. And that's a very important thing for you to keep in mind because you are a nonprofit entity. All you are asking your rate payers to do is pay what it is costing you to provide that service. And as your costs go up, you've got no choice but to pass those costs through to your ultimate rate payer. Many of the reasons why rates are going up are beyond the ability of a city like yours to really control. For example, you've got no control over the fact that your lines get old and have to be replaced. I mean, that's a fact of life. Secondly, the cost of everything goes up by 3% a year just due to inflation. And you try to run your wastewater business like a business so that when costs go up, you pass those costs through to your rate payers. And like I said, cost of everything goes up by 3% a year. So there are a lot of pressures that are facing utilities like yours that are pushing up your costs now and in the future. And it is prudent for you to do these periodic rate plans to address these cost increases in a way that really enables you to minimize the impact on your rate payers. Okay. What do people here in the city pay for wastewater service? Well, if you're an average residential customer, or a commercial customer for that matter, you pay rates in two ways. You pay a base charge each month, and then you pay a rate for every 100 cubic feet of wastewater service that you use. If you're a residential customer, right now, you pay a base charge of $14.56 a month, and you get the first 400 cubic feet of wastewater service included in that base charge. That comes out to about 3,000 gallons or so of wastewater service. Now, for every 100 cubic feet above 400, you pay a rate of $3.64 per 100 cubic feet. And what does that mean in terms of what people pay each month? Well, the average family here in the city of North Little Rock uses about 700 cubic feet of wastewater service a month. That means that average customer pays about $25.48 a month for that service. Well, that amount is actually significantly less than what your neighbors in Little Rock are paying. In Little Rock, they're paying $35 a month for the same level of service. What that tells us is that different cities have different costs. And as a matter of fact, your costs actually compare pretty favorably to many other cities in the state of Arkansas. This chart right here compares monthly charges for 5,000 gallons, which is roughly equivalent to 700 cubic feet, in the city of North Little Rock with other utilities here in Arkansas. As you can see, you are higher than some. You're higher than Pine Bluff, and you're higher than Sherwood and Texarkana, and you're about the same as Conway. You're about, right about at the state average, and you are significantly less than many other cities here. What does this tell us? This basically tells us that your rates are certainly not out of proportion to many of your neighbors. As you might expect, you're a little higher than some. You're a little lower than others. But again, keep in mind what I told you earlier, and that is that 30% to 40% of utilities charge rates that don't cover their costs. So just because a utility's rates are less than yours doesn't necessarily mean their costs are less than yours. Okay. Just a little bit of brief background information on your system. You have about 32,000 customers right now. To no great surprise, the vast majority of them are residential. You have about 22,000 residential inside customers and about 6,800 residential outside customers. But you have a pretty fair commercial base, too. But the vast majority of your customers, to no great surprise, are residential in nature. When you do a financial plan of this nature, what you do is you try to take what your costs are today and forecast them into the future. Now, a forecast is not a guarantee. A forecast is a prediction based on a series of reasonable assumptions. None of us can tell the future with perfect accuracy. All we can do is make a series of assumptions about where we think your costs are going to go and design a rate plan that helps you recover those costs. What are some of the primary assumptions that we used in doing this long-term forecast? Well, one is that your accounts and your usage will be fairly consistent, fairly limited growth over the next 10 years, a little less than 1% a year. You're a fairly mature city. You're seeing a little bit of growth, but not really all that much. That's built into the rate plan. Furthermore, we're assuming that many of your operating costs are going to go up at about 3% to 5% a year. And some costs, like chemicals, gasoline, and insurance, are probably going to go up at even greater rates. You have to take these things into consideration because your costs tomorrow are not going to be the same as your costs today. What we're going to present to you is a five-year rate plan, a plan with adjustments for each of the next five years. And so when you do something like that, you have to take into consideration the fact that costs will be different in the coming years than they are today. This rate plan certainly takes that into consideration. A couple of other things, like, for example, we're anticipating that you're going to have to add another three-man repair crew. You are projected to retire some debt in the next five years, and that's going to benefit you. It's going to minimize the need for some of your adjustments. But the most significant impact on your rates is something that Mr. Wilkin alluded to earlier. And that is the fact that due to the EPA requirements that you've been under over the last couple of years, you're going to have to fund approximately $25 million in new debt to pay for some of these capital improvements in the coming years. Furthermore, we're projecting that you may have to issue as much as another $14 million in debt on or around 2019 to fund these improvements. Now, these numbers are a little fluid. The $25 million number is pretty solid. The $14 million number, that's not projected for a few years from now. It could vary a little bit from that. But what is certainly indisputable is the fact that you've got a lot of capital improvements and a lot of investments that you're going to have to make in your system. And so you have to design a rate plan that enables you to repay all those costs. This right here is your projected capital improvement plan. It is almost $55 million over the next 10 years. But think about it. This is $55 million of investment in the future of the city of North Little Rock. This is money that's going to be put directly into your streets. It's going to be built, it's going to be used to repair, maintain, and improve the quality of service for all of your customers. Treatment plants need to be overhauled. Lift stations need to be overhauled. Collection lines need to be replaced. That's a fact of life. If you don't do that, the quality of your service is going to deteriorate rapidly, and it's going to put the environment at risk. While it's never easy to have to invest this level of money, keep in mind that all of this is going to go into the future of the community itself. $55 million is a lot of money, but a well-developed rate plan can enable you to borrow the money needed to do these capital improvements while minimizing the impact on your rate payers. This is your perceived debt, $25 million in 2016, and on or about $14 million in the year 2019, and then maybe some more debt in 2023, 2024. Keep in mind, this is a significant investment in the future of the city. What does that mean in terms of your total cost of service? Well, this chart right here is intended to show where your costs are projected to go over the next 10 years. This bar chart shows your operating costs and your debt service costs in the current year and for each of the next 10 years. The blue part of each bar is your operating costs, and the red portion of each bar is your debt service. As you can see, your operating costs are expected to trend up over the next 10 years, 3% to 5% a year for most of your costs. But as you can see, the red portion, which is your debt service, is going to become a larger percentage of your total costs over the next 10 years. That is entirely due to the additional debt that you're going to have to issue in the next 10 years. For those of you who like numbers as much as I do, this is that same chart showing the numbers. I know there's a lot of numbers on this page, but I think I can walk you through them pretty easily. This breaks down your cost of service. Your cost of service is four basic elements. Your first is your operating costs. As you can see, your operating costs are looking to go up about $400,000 to $500,000 each year for the next five years. Capital outlays are what's known as your small-ticket capital items, things like trucks and vectors and computers and pumps and that kind of thing. That's going to be fairly steady. It bounces around a little bit, as you might expect capital outlays to do over the next five years, but it's generally about $1.5 to $2 million a year. Your current debt service, as you can see, goes up to $3.7 million in 2016, but then goes back down to $2.9 million by 2020 because you're retiring some debt in the next five years. But this is the key line item here, your future debt service from the new debt that you're projected to issue in the next couple of years. As you can see right here, that debt is expected to go to about $800,000 a year in 2017 and $2.2 million by 2020. So that's $2.2 million of new costs that you're projected to incur by the year 2020. What does that mean? Your total cost of service, which is just about $15 million in 2015, is expected to reach $20 million by the year 2020. So as costs go up, rate plans have to be adopted accordingly. So during the course of this study, we did several different alternative rate plans. We took it to, first, the utility staff, and then we took it to your Citizens Committee to have them look at several of the different alternatives. This is the alternative rate plan that the committee finally decided was the most appropriate, reasonable recommendation to take to you, the city council. First, I'm going to show you the rates themselves, and then I'll show you the impact of this rate plan on your average rate payer. For your residential and commercial customers, this rate plan recommends the following: that effective in January of 2016, you adjust your base charge from $14.56 to $15.43. That's a 6% increase. We recommend taking it to $16.36, the base charge in 2017, $17.01 in 2018, and then trending up to $18.59 by January of 2021. The volume charge right now is $3.64 per 100 cubic feet. We recommend taking that to $4.04, January of 2016, $4.48 in 2017, $4.88 in 2018, and gradually up to $5.81 by 2021. Okay. What does this mean in terms of what the impact would be on an average monthly bill? Well, the average customer here in the city uses 700 cubic feet of wastewater service a month. What that means is about 70% to 80% of monthly bills are going to be 700 cubic feet or less. You've got some people and some businesses that use a lot more than that, but the majority of your customers use 700 cubic feet, and many of them use even less than that. If you're a customer who uses 400 cubic feet a month, right now, you pay the minimum charge of $14.56. Under this plan, it would go up by 87 cents a month, effective in January. It would go to $15.43. In January 2017, it would go up by 93 cents. So as costs go up, rate plans have to be adopted accordingly. So what I'm, so during the course of this study, we did several different alternative rate plans. We took it to first the utility staff, and then we took it to your citizens committee to have them look at several of the different alternatives. This is the alternative rate plan that the committee finally decided was the most appropriate, reasonable recommendation to take to you, the city council. First, I'm going to show you the rates themselves, and then I'll show you the impact on, of this rate plan on your average ratepayer. For your residential and commercial customers, this rate plan recommends the following, that effective in January of twenty sixteen, you adjust your base charge from fifteen, from fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents to fifteen dollars and forty-three cents. That's a six percent increase. We recommend taking it to sixteen dollars and thirty-six cents, the base charge in twenty seventeen, seventeen oh one in twenty eighteen, and then trending up to eighteen dollars and fifty-nine cents by the, by January of twenty twenty-one. The volume charge right now is three dollars and sixty-four cents per hundred cubic feet. We recommend taking that to four dollars and four cents, January of twenty sixteen, four forty-eight in twenty seventeen, four eighty-eight in twenty eighteen, and gradually up to five dollars and eighty-one cents by twenty twenty-one. Okay, what does this mean in terms of what the impact would be on an average monthly bill? Well, the average customer here in the city uses seven hundred cubic feet of wastewater service a month. What that means is about seventy to eighty percent of monthly bills are going to be seven hundred cubic feet or less. You've got some people and some businesses that use a lot more than that. But the majority of your customers use seven hundred cubic feet, and many of them use even less than that. If you're a customer who uses four hundred cubic feet a month, right now, right now, you pay the minimum charge of fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Under this plan, it would go up by eighty-seven cents a month, effective in January. It would go to fifteen dollars and forty-three cents. In January twenty seventeen, it would go up by ninety-three cents. And then it would go up by about fifty to sixty cents a month each year after that. If you're that average ratepayer who uses seven hundred cubic feet a month, right now you pay twenty-five dollars and forty-eight cents a month for that service. Under this plan, that would go up by two dollars and seven cents. It would go up to twenty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. It would go up by two dollars and twenty-five cents a month in twenty seventeen, and then it would go up between a dollar and a dollar and a half a month each year after that. The vast majority of ratepayers under this plan would see their bills go up between one and two dollars a month in twenty sixteen under this plan. They would see their bills go up one to two dollars a month in twenty seventeen, and they would see their bills go up between fifty cents and a dollar per month in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one. Now, I understand, and we all understand, that it's never an easy thing to do, to ask ratepayers to pay more for anything, you know, at any time, for any reason. But there are a lot of very compelling reasons for you to do this. And a lot of the pressures that you're facing right now are being faced by a lot of your neighbors as well. I know it's rather cold comfort, but even cities like Little Rock are struggling with these very same issues. Little Rock has passed a rate plan that is forecasting similar increases over the next five years. As you can see, their rate right now, their average rate for about five thousand gallons of service or seven hundred cubic feet right now is about ten dollars more a month than yours, and they're projected to increase their rates by similar amounts for each of the next five years. There's no other way to deal with these kind of cost increases. Cities like Little Rock are facing it, and it's really causing a lot of stress and pressure on all of these utilities. Now, one other factor, one other example we'd like to use is the example of Fort Smith. And that's the example of the utility that for many years did not do a lot of the rate increases that were necessary in order to maintain a well-functioning system. As a result of that, their system ran into a state of disrepair and emergency, and they were forced to implement some very significant increases in order to meet all of the environmental standards that, um, that they're facing right now. Fort Smith right now has a rate that's higher than yours, about twenty-nine dollars for five thousand gallons as opposed to twenty-five dollars for yours. But they're looking at very significant increases over the next couple of years. And so the lesson from that is that gradual annual adjustments tend to be more favorable to a utility than big sudden increases because not only does it get you the revenue you need to fund all of your operations, but it avoids the big sudden rate shocks that some utilities have to implement when they haven't done the adjustments in the past. Okay, I'm to my last chart. Once again, I really want to emphasize that as a rate consultant, I've done these kind of presentations for utilities all over the country. All of them are facing the same issues that you are, and all of them realize that this is not an easy decision to make. It's never easy to ask people to pay more. But believe it or not, there are a lot of benefits to implementing a rate plan such as this. And there are a lot of reasons, of a lot of very legitimate reasons, why these rate plans need to be implemented. For example, your costs are going up. Whether you adjust your rates or not, your costs are going to continue to go up. So one of the primary reasons why we're recommending that you adopt this plan is to pay those increasing operating costs. I mean, think about commodities that are out there, you know, a gallon of gas, a cart and a milk, a, a, a Big Mac at McDonald's. All of them cost more today than they did ten years ago. The same thing is true with something as fundamental as wastewater service. Secondly, wastewater service is subject to these very large capital improvement costs. It costs an awful lot of money to process wastewater service, to build those plants, to protect the environment, to get the sewage from the home to the end, to, to, to the end location. And like any asset, they wear out over time, and you have to continually invest in it to maintain a high, high quality of service. And finally, a third reason is that you have made some very difficult decisions over the last five to ten years in doing these periodic rate plans. You have been rewarded with a sound financial utility. The wastewater utility is in good financial shape right now. But utilities that are in good financial shape can become in bad financial shape very quickly if you don't maintain and stay on top of these continued cost increases. So one of the big benefits of this plan is it will enable you to maintain and continue to keep a good quality, a financial quality of your utility. Um, I really appreciate the chance to come up here and give you this presentation and to present these recommendations with, to you. And I strongly recommend, as a representative of Wild and Financial Services and Economist.com, that you adopt this long-term rate plan. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thanks, Dan. One comment I'll make quickly, if I'm not mistaken, Mark. Uh, we will schedule a public hearing at the next city council meeting, uh, at six o'clock. And, um, then it would be our plan to vote on it the last meeting of this month.
Yes, sir, I would hope that, that you would call it and read it tonight, set the public hearing, and then at the next, at, for the next meeting, and then after that present, after that public hearing, then call it and read it twice and vote on it.
Okay, Ms. Ross.
I've asked Mr. Wilkins if at the next meeting before we have a public hearing, if he can bring something, some information, you know, I've seen, you know, the projects that we have completed, the projects that we're working on that, that is required, you know, for, and just let people see what's actually being done and why we have to have this.
Absolutely.
Okay, it's, okay, thank you.
Ms. Vouch.
In your review for figuring out how much the costing was, did you have a cause to review the current loan and the financials involved in that? I mean, as far as, uh, the expenditures, were they all on track to meet the needs of that? Or we're not paying any bonuses? We're not hiring frivolous employees or fancy vans or anything like that, correct?
We, we actually have not added any additional employees to this time that we had approximately, uh, uh, three or four years ago. Uh, we have eighty-five employees now. Now, we are proposing that we add a, a three-man repair crew to, uh, catch up on some, uh, issues, and we think that that's going to give us a, a good payback. And that would be a three-man repair crew, uh, that operates with a backhoe in the, um, in the collection system every day. The committee has, uh, been generous in allowing us to do a three percent cost of living increase each year. And, uh, it, it is projected that would be in this rate plan. That's the committee's decision, and, uh, these are dirty jobs. These people work very hard, and it's hard sometimes to find people that are willing to do it. And, um, uh, we need to keep those people that are trained and, and, uh, very valuable.
Thank you.
You do a great job, um, Mark. Um, okay, we're going to have a public hearing next meeting. Uh, seeing no other questions, uh, thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you.
Uh, let's go into, um, new business, old business, unfinished business.
You have one signed up for public comment on legislation.
Okay. Uh, Dennis, are you ready to speak about, um, R fifteen one forty-five, Dennis Fisk?
Yeah. Mayor and Council, my name's Dennis Fisk. I'm president of Rose City Neighborhood Association. Going to hear you speak just a little bit on resolution approving a lease agreement with the property owner, the new property owners of the, you know, the elementary school in Rose City. Uh, we found out a while back that that property had been sold, and we immediately started wondering what we was going to do, maybe about our park we put in about five or six years ago. And we was wondering what we was going to do about our, uh, equipment, and you know, maybe exploring the, uh, the idea of finding another place to put it or whatever. And we kind of, we, we really wasn't going nowhere that we couldn't come to conclusion where we thought might be a good place to put it. But anyway, uh, later on, uh, we did find out that, uh, the property owner was willing to come into an agreement with the city. And, and, uh, matter of fact, I did, uh, talk to the property owner a while back about, uh, having a national night out there, and he wanted to work with us to let us go ahead and do that. And, uh, I just wanted to tell the city, you know, how, you know, I'm representing all of our, uh, residents in Rose City. I think we, we appreciate what they've done to help us with our park, you know, as far as keeping it up, you know, and helping us take care of it. And I think it's, uh, I think it's been a real asset to the community. And I'd also like to thank the people that use the park. Just be perfectly honest, I wasn't for sure what kind of success rate we'd have maybe when we first put it in. But I was fooled pretty bad, I think, because, you know, I look at it pretty regular, and seems like to me that, uh, you know, it's just basically got basic wear and tear, you know. Seems like the people over appreciates it, and they've taken pretty good care of it. And I'm looking forward to get this, uh, phase two maybe going. We're going to put a, we're hoping to get another stage of the park put in. We're gonna, the next, uh, little stage is going to be for some disadvantaged children, you know. And I understand it's going to be maybe the first one in the city, and I'm looking forward maybe to trying to get that off the ground. So anyway, the main deal, I was just trying to, you know, tell everybody I appreciate what they've done for us out there. And, uh, hopefully we can work something out with this lease agreement with the new owners.
Good deal, Dennis, thank you. You do a wonderful job down there, and I appreciate your efforts. Um, okay, Ms. Whitby.
Unfinished business, O fifteen sixty-one, Alderman Taylor.
Mr. Taylor wants to hold that.
You want to, well, I want to ask. O fifteen sixty-five, Mayor Smith.
Hold it, please.
Okay. Consent agenda.
Okay, anybody want to pull one of the two out of the consent agenda? Ms. Ross?
I don't, I mean, we don't have to pull it, but I just wanted to add on to what Mr. Fisk said. As far as having an all-inclusive playground, I, how much I respect them for going after that, and I hope that they make this work.
Absolutely. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Some.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, new business.
R fifteen one forty-six, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at ten twelve East Second Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing on, uh, ten twelve East Second. Anyone here to speak on ten twelve East Second? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R fifteen one forty-seven, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at one oh five Davis Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing on one oh five Davis Street. Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R fifteen one forty-eight, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on, uh, these lien for grass cutting expenses and abatement nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Ordinances, O fifteen seventy-five, Mayor Smith.
Call it, please.
An ordinance fixing rates for services furnished by the sewer system of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining there too, first reading.
Move suspend the rules in place on the second reading.
Second.
You want to hold it? You want to call it?
Hold it.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, do one anyway.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Motion to suspend.
Yeah.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead and read it a second time. An ordinance fixing rates for services furnished by the sewer system of the city of North Little Rock and prescribing other matters pertaining there too, second reading.
Okay, let's hold it.
And a public hearing will be scheduled for six oh five P M. at the next meeting.
Correct.
O fifteen seventy-six, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for sand dredging work at the North Little Rock Municipal Dock appropriating funds, first reading.
Move suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
There a motion to adopt?
How about a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
This is from the flood that we had. Um, we applied all of our expenses from the flood, which was well over a hundred thousand dollars with FEMA, and we were turned down. Um, you know, will we try some more? Sure we will, but I, I think this is going to be a dead expense for us. But if you all been down there, it's, uh, all sanded and selted up really bad, so it's got to be done. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
O fifteen seventy-seven, Alderman Taylor.
Hold it.
Good.
O fifteen seventy-eight, Alderman Baxter.
Please call it.
An ordinance to reclassify property located at one forty-seven Sunset Drive in the city of North Little Rock from C three to R two to recognize an existing home by amending ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second, I have a question.
Uh, suspend the readings on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. State your question.
This is correct, uh, uh, an incorrect zoning.
How in the world did that ever get zoned C three?
Sean, you want to brief this? You want me to give, oh, whoa.
We had a couple of these in Ward Four way back there. How in the world?
Yeah, he'll explain. We've done some research, and back in nineteen eighty, it was that way. So I was trying to find out how long it's been that way. We can go back to eighty, and it was still that way. So powers that be, when it was annexed, it appears that someone had thought, uh, that would be a good place for commercial on that side of the street.
Well, why wouldn't we, uh, take this to R one? And that's a single-family home there.
That'll do, single family.
Uh, we can go R, R one, it'd be, it's the same. R two allows special uses, uh, makes no difference either way.
What does the owner of the home want to do?
Subber?
Come, come on down.
Come on down, yeah.
Their chance.
Sir and ma'ams, I have to tell you, this was a big surprise to, to myself and to my realtor when got ready to close this, um, this transaction. Um, I honestly, I don't know the difference between R one and R two. Um, I would take either one at this point. It is a, a single-family home. That neighborhood, if any of you have ever been up there before, it's probably going to stay that way for a long, long time, so.
I would, I would amend it, uh, ask for amendment to take it to R one. Go ahead.
I, I guess I want to ask the realtor, too. Does it, a lot of times, you know, with the realtors, if R one is more favorable or an R two? And everything around it is R one, other than the C three section. Looks like there's another one like that. Sean?
Well, R two allow like a duplex, wouldn't it, Sean?
R, R two is single-family, but it would allow special uses for like a daycare or some, whatever, whatever it's special use. So R, R one is just most restrictive.
We think that would be great because we, I'm sure that nobody in that neighborhood wants a daycare or anything like that in that neighborhood. I think everybody's pretty much settled there, so I think that would be the best way to.
Fine with me.
All right, how about?
Just wanted to make sure you knew what you were getting.
Uh, motion to amend the, R, strike the R two and insert R one.
Some of.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the amendment, uh, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes, move the adopters amended. Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, it's amended, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Okay. Um, we've got public comment section here to remind everybody, three minutes, please. I know everybody. Dennis, you want to speak again?
Hello.
Are you passing your ears off?
I'll, I'll.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and identify yourself, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm the, own the owners of Jones Heavy Halling at Broadway. And last couple of years, I've had problems. I've addressed Ms. Robinson, she's tried to address problems, Mr. Taylor's tried to address the problem with Superior Funeral Home. I run a trucking business. We've been in North Little Rock a long time. We've tried to be good neighbors to everybody around there, but I've run it, they're 24/7. And the funeral home has been a number of times, a number of times, asking to quit. Just respect my right as the on, owner of the company. They blocked my driveway. I've had oversized loads out on that street, cannot get off the highway. That puts me liable if a car runs up there and hits. We've had the police down there, I've gone over there. It don't seem, no matter what we do, and I just tried to explain, how would y'all like it if I brought my trucks and trailers and parked them on your property where you couldn't have a funeral? And that's all I'm asking for, respect, and I cannot get it. A week ago, this last Saturday, they had my driveway blocked up. I can't run a business this way.
Is, are they doing it on purpose, or is it people attending a funeral that are parking there not knowing?
It's the people attending the funeral, I'm asking, it's truly them to put people, and they say they're going to. They told Ms. Robinson they would put people out there to stop them from parking, and they had not done it.
Can we, can we sign that, Chris?
Of course. Are there no signs there now?
No parking signs?
I put violet paint out there. I had put a no parking, that all unauthorized vehicles be towed away. I done that Monday.
Yeah, but I don't think you can tow a vehicle off a public street without getting liable.
This is no, this is private drive.
Mayor, I think you started by the private car.
Yeah, it's my private property.
But they're parking, okay, let, let us look into it. Chris, you and Chief Bradley and Chief Davis?
Well, Mayor, I had, going over and I tried to do this for you, I've been threatened, I have been spit on, and I won't tolerate it no more.
Well, just take a breath. We don't want you, we don't want you to get in trouble. Let us do the.
I don't want.
Let us do the heavy lifting for you, okay?
Yeah.
Don't get yourself in trouble. Give Chris your name and phone number, um, so that we can call you, and we'll, we'll figure something out.
Get spit in your face, and you turn around and walk away, I think it's pretty good man.
Yeah, do it again until I can get it fixed, okay?
Okay.
Um, okay. Jimmy Arden. Jimmy's done. Uh, John Douglas Richards.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak. This is the fourth time I've been here. My family cemetery is at Smokey Lane and 46th Street. October last year, a apartment complex was built, and the road going to my family cemetery was covered with sod and a sprinkler system. I have not been able to drive to my family cemetery. This is a jury of my peers right here. I'm going to speak to these people right here, because I haven't had any results from these people here. What would you do if somebody blocked your family cemetery? Jason Peterson did a report on it, Seven on Your Side, in October. Nothing was done about it. There's approximately 42 people buried there. My name is John Douglas Richards VI, and there's four buried there. This family cemetery started in early 1800s. The only way to get to that cemetery is to walk 70 yards through this sod and sprinkler system. Then you turn right to another road, and it's like 30 yards to the gate. What would you do? Fontainebleau is the apartment complex. John Burkholder owns it, and he's a bully. My relatives have told me that outside this cemetery, there's slaves buried there. I have called NWA CP, they will not return my calls. I am begging you, as a jury of my peers, to say something. My aunt is here in support. My cousin is here in support. This is the fourth time we've been here, and nothing. So what would you do? Thank you.
Thank you. Any city council members?
Me, me, me.
Ms. Ross?
I just want to remind everybody that Dogtown Derby is this Saturday. It's the soapbox cars that the, the kids from the East Initiative at Lakewood Middle School, they're going to be going down the hill, right here on Main Street, on Main Street Bi-Dock. Uh, Principal Lee Tackett is going to be leading it off in a very special car. It starts at 9:30, they're going to have food trucks, they're going to have, uh.
Is it 9:00 or 9:30?
9:30.
Okay.
The race starts at 9:30, but if you want to, I'm, I'm sure everybody's going to want to get there a little early. They have food vendors, they're going to have, uh, displays from the different East projects down there, so it's going to be a fun time. There'll be a lot going on. It'll be in the police station parking lot there at 18th and Main.
It, it's going to be pretty good to see those, um, soapboxes, cars running down the Main Street Bi-Dock, so, uh, anyway, we encourage everybody to be there. I will be there, looking forward to it. Mr. Fauch?
Again, I'd like to, to thank the, uh, the police officers, firefighters, and all the other city employees that came out Tuesday night for National Night Out. We had a great turnout in multiple, I think it was 14 neighborhoods, uh, something like that, and everywhere you went, every neighborhood group that you went to, uh, police were there, firefighters were there, and, and, and like I said, multiple city employees, uh, were at all these locations, and I can't thank them for giving, uh, their time. I can't thank them enough for their time.
Amen.
It was perfect, Mayor, just perfect.
We realize how, you're out of order, sir.
Doug.
You're welcome to come as long as you go by the rules, okay? Um, okay, I've got some things to go about. Um, budget, it's that time of year that we all hate, uh, but we finished up our draft budget, um, are putting the last little bit on it. Uh, we're going to have you a copy of it Monday, the 19th. Uh, my question to you is, Karen, I think it's one of the questions, is, do you want a hard copy, or do you want it, um?
Copy. Hard copy.
Does everybody want hard copies?
Hard copy.
All right, we will deliver Monday you a hard copy of, of the 2016 budget draft. Now, my plan is, the next city council meeting is going to be a long evening, but, um, to start at 4 o'clock next, Monday, um, not next Monday, but Monday, the 26th, at 4 o'clock, and we'll work on the budget from 4 until 6, and then we will start our city council meeting. Remember, two hours is all we can handle. We've tried to do more than two hours, and we get tired and honorary, so, uh, we'll do two hours. If we need more time, then we'll schedule another night after that. So 4 to 6 on the 26th, and we'll send out an email to remind everybody, uh, and then